Good morning. This is the time we have posted and the location for our 10 o'clock regular Board of Supervisors meeting, and it is Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 at 10:00 a.m., Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane Building, G, Bisbee, Arizona 85603. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have that physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is not cooperating. This chair will cooperate, but that chair wasn't. Okay. So, the order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A and 3. We will begin with the roll call. District 1.
Crosby, here.
District 2.
Supervisor English is present.
And I am here representing District 3. Peggy Judd. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 7461781. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation material displayed at the Board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we do have people who have signed up to speak for call to the public today. The first is Paul R. Varble. Thank you. Please approach the microphone. And everyone who speaks, state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Sierra Vista. Ann and Peggy, you broke the law. Rescind your vote. The Board acted in violation of statute, state statute, when it voted for the 18 voting centers. Ann and Peggy, you broke the law. Rescind your vote. On September 12th, the Board voted on Resolution 2324 citing ARS 16411. That was not approved, which resulted to approve redesignating the 55 precinct polling places previously used in our county. Ann and Peggy, you broke the law. Rescind your vote. According to ARS 16411A, the decision on the number of voting locations had to have been made by October 1st. So, the vote on December 12th is clearly in violation of the state statute. We, the people, are taking our country back from this treasonous tyrannical government. Tactical civics teaches all American citizens how to do this. It starts with "we, the people," then the grand juries, then the militias who can enforce the laws to restore our constitutional republic and puts all our servants back in their place or prison or grave. We will have election integrity, for without it, there will be election interference and fraud. We will have paper ballots, one day, one vote with voter picture, ID, and proof of American citizenship. No mail-in ballots and absolutely no machines of any kind. And we will remove any politician, government official, or enforcement agencies that violate their oath of office, vetoes election integrity, or commits treason like opening our borders. And if you don't like that, resign or pack your bags and leave the country. There is no room for you here. This is America, and it's for American citizens. God bless America, our citizens, and God bless Donald Trump. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Radford Hyde. He says he's on teams, so.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. My, my name is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I've been in IT and cybersecurity for over 30 years. I hold a CISSP, Certified Ethical Hacker, GAC Certified Penetration Tester, and several other professional certifications. There were several gigantic takeaways from the ESNS demo at Cochise College last week. Senior VP and Chief Information Security Officer of ESNS, Chris Walachin, admitted to me that the accreditation of the lab that certified ESNS 6.0.4.0 system used in Cochise County had lapsed before the 2022 election. I believe the ARS supersedes the US EAC in these circumstances, and it requires the system to be recertified by a lab with an actual valid accreditation, whether the EAC requires it or not. Also, despite all of the information provided by the vendors so that there was no network connectivity, a lie repeated Mockingbird Media style over and over again by the vendors, the politicians, and the media, he admitted that their Express Poll tablets, which are part of their system, no matter what doublespeak or odd semantics he uses, are definitely network-connected via Wi-Fi and internet-connected through the use of a cellular data internet router, MiFi. It was interesting to note that they skipped right over the internet connectivity part while explaining how the system works when they declared that none of their systems are network-connected. And they were rightly called out on the lie by several attendees in the audience, including me. They made the asinine claim that the Express Poll tablets aren't really part of their system and thus basically are irrelevant to the discussion. He even admitted that the database of who voted and who has not yet voted is updated between the machines and between the voting centers very often. And the database also updates at the state level several times per hour during the election. Third, he even admitted that the latest version that they're testing was successfully test-hacked, and they will be releasing a report on this hack in several weeks. The story is morphed from, one, no internet connectivity. Well, they have internet communication, but it's secure. Well, actually, they do connect to the internet, but it's secure. Two, four, it's good that there's internet connectivity. Why all the hiding from the truth from the beginning? There is always this tiptoeing around the facts, beating around the bush, and corporate explaining of probable lawbreaking, and passing the buck hoping people will just go along with it. This denial of facts and the truth is almost unbelievable to behold. Get rid of these machines now. Thank you to Supervisor Crosby for courageously sticking up for truth and trying to end the charade. Also, elect Supervisor Crosby is chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Morse. She's also on teams.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Allison Morse. I'm from Portal, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Excuse me. I'd also like to thank County Administrator Rich Karwachka, Elections Director Tim Maddox, and Cochise County Community College for hosting the two recent demos on ESNS election equipment. The presentations were professionally executed and well-attended. I look forward to the video being posted on the county's election webpage. I was happy to see that Supervisor Ann English was in attendance, but was disappointed that Supervisors Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd were not to be seen. Both have expressed concern with our thoroughly tested and certified machines. These same supervisors are now under indictment, facing felony charges for their unwillingness to certify the results of our elections. I've already spoken about my efforts to obtain information from various county departments. I've submitted numerous public record requests that are neither very extensive nor complicated. Most are six to eight months old. Unfortunately, I don't have the time or resources to file lawsuits in an effort to get that information. The county was sued last year, however, by the Arizona Center for Investigation for withholding basic information from the Sheriff's Department. More recently, the organization, American Oversight, has filed a lawsuit in order to obtain election-related information. I urge the county to cooperate in an expedient manner because two of those named in the lawsuit, Supervisor Tom Crosby and Recorder David Stevens, are running for reelection. Voters have a right to know about candidates on the ballot and who is worthy of their support. If workload is a problem, perhaps the county should consider spending money on hiring another staff person to handle public records requests rather than on settlements of unnecessary lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cara Harris, and she is on teams.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Cara. I'm a Cara Harris, a resident of Whitestone, an 85 birth, and a taxpayer and your employer as we, the people, are who the Constitution has empowered to govern. Please understand this, as I'm growing weary of reminding you all of this fact. The issue is your violation of your oath of office. At the last Board meeting, Ms. Olmstead reminded all of you of your violation of the ARS statutes. I will not repeat what she said, as this is on the record. Ms. Judd, you violated the law when you put the voting centers back on the agenda and re-voted. This vote was illegal in violation of your oath of office. You can't just change your mind willy-nilly and do whatever you please. I want to thank all of you for forcing me to revisit my constitutional rights and your limits. You have challenged me to relearn my rights by seeing your violations repeatedly. I have personally heard Supervisor Crosby advise you both of these violations only to see you persist in doing so. And since I won't digress here, I will only state, number one, Radford, who just spoke, is an experienced person. I am not. What I want as Jane Q. citizen is paper ballots, precinct voting, and no machines. I have worked the polls since pre-Obama, and what we did before works. We can't be hacked. The machines can. And Radford expressed that before I got on this speaking platform. The machines have proven hackable by people like him that are far smarter than me. He's warning you. We are facing many citizens who know their votes were stolen, so you better watch out because if it happens again, people are going to react for their constitutional rights. Choose to do the right thing. Follow the laws as we must as citizens, and you, as servants to those citizens, should be complying with at these meetings. I sure hope you fix Mr. Kern's road. Thank you and have a good day. And Tom for Supervisor, the Chairman of the Board.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Olmstead. She is also on teams.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Olmstead. I live in Whitestone, and I thank you for this opportunity and special thanks to those coordinating teams. The other day, I heard a presentation by Hillsdale College titled, "Do We Have a Constitution Anymore?" In summary, the speaker defined our Constitution in its broader meaning, that is, establishing a republican form of government and laws to provide protection and liberty. The speaker went on to say, "I can't prove that we don't have a Constitution anymore, but it's definitely sick." Case in point, my comments to this Board at the last meeting, when I spoke, are the Board's clear violation regarding the number of voting locations for 2024. Citing Article 7, Section 12 of the Arizona Constitution, quote, "There shall be enacted registration and other laws to secure the purity of elections and guard against abuses of the elective franchise," unquote. Black's Law Dictionary defines elective franchise as, quote, "The right of voting at public elections, the privilege of qualified voters to cast their ballots for the candidates they favor at elections, authorized by law." Let me repeat, authorized by law. Your vote, no, on September 12th automatically determined that our county would revert back to 55 voting locations. In contrast, your vote on December 12th violates ARS 16411A. As such, you are dishonoring our Constitution and, more importantly, your oath. And yet, we're admonished because we don't trust our election process. Why should we? You broke the law. Last week, the county spent resources on a snazzy presentation, trying to convince us that our elections are safe and secure. That did not resolve our trust, our distrust. To manage our elections with machines against the will of the people, we must conform to your definition of elective franchise. But no, we're not going to conform, especially since it's you who have demonstrated lack of principle. This is simple. You can fix this. Intentional or unintentional, you can restore election integrity by upholding your September 12th vote as required by our election laws and revert back to 55 voting locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tricia Geradetti, and she is on teams.
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. This is Tricia Geradetti. I live in Sierra Vista. Along with many people we've heard from, I went to the ESNS demonstration as well. It was very helpful to me, since I have voted by mail for many years, and so I hadn't seen a lot of this equipment. I went through a test run of checking in with the poll tablet, which then gave me a ballot card that I went over to a voting machine to cast my vote in this fake, fake test race. Overall, I found it extremely interesting and enlightening. I could, once I inserted that card that I was given that had determined where I lived and what I could vote on in a real election, I put that card into the voting machine. Then I had choices presented to me on the touchscreen. I could tell that if I was skeptical about the machine properly recording my vote, that then when I said I was done and done with the touchscreen and printed the card again, I would want to stand there and confirm that the card indeed recorded my yeses or my noes or my selections for a candidate. So, that would take some time, but that would be my last opportunity to check that what I had in my hand matched what I had intended to vote. But for those who don't trust voting by mail, I guess I would point out that we get a paper ballot. And so, I then get to sit at home and make sure that the circles I want to be filled in are the ones that I filled in, that I didn't have to double-check on this machine. And then I seal my ballot, and I put it in a drop box rather than US mail, save a little bit of money. And so, I feel quite secure with the way the system runs now with vote by mail, and so do 80% of the people in Arizona. They use vote by mail. So, I think we're on a good path, and I have enough faith that I need in those machines. Machines are less likely to make mistakes than humans.
Thank you, Tricia. The time is up. Our next speaker is Shana Herrera. She is here a person.
Good morning, Shana Herrera. I live in Hurford. I gotta say, I'm disappointed in the vote when you guys voted against the precinct voting and voted for the centers. The dual votes, the dates, the timing, none of that withstanding. You had the opportunity to change one thing without getting any flack or slack from the state, and you chose not to do it. I, that's very disappointing. That's all I have to say. Oh, I nominate Tom Crosby for chair.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Trol.
Hello, Sandy Trol from Sierra Vista. I have two topics. First one is, "Stop the lithium mining in Cochise County, Arizona. I have not seen the environmental impact statement, if there even is one. The toxins released are detrimental to the health and welfare of every living creature in our county, and every person involved in allowing this to occur needs to be immediately removed from office. Stop the drilling now. Cochise County Board of Supervisors, do your jobs and stop this crap." I'm talking to you, Ann English and Peggy Judd. It seems that Tom Crosby is the only one on the Board that believes in the Constitution and adheres to his oath of office and election integrity. He would vote to stop this crap, and you two need to support him. We will not get any help from Katie Hobbs, who vetoed election integrity and has committed election interference. Carrie Lake would put a stop to this drilling if she were in her rightful position as the governor. We, the people, demand you to stop the lithium mining. And then, the other thing I wanted to talk about, the elections. I want to speak out against the unlawful second vote in December that set up 18 vote centers in Cochise County for the 2024 elections. The deadline, according to ARS 16411A, to declare precincts or vote centers was October 1st. The Board of Supervisors already voted to use 55 precincts in September, when you did not approve the 17 vote centers. The Board acted in violation of state statute. We must go back to 55 precincts because we're going to paper ballots, in-person voting, one day only, with no machines counted at the precinct level. And one thing I did get from the ESNS presentation is that these machines are so secure, nobody can even look at those ballots. So, that tells you everything you need to know right there. Our elections are unconstitutional. Third-party corporations are running our elections, not we, the people. Ballot counting is not to be done in secret. It is to be done in public. The Board needs to return to precinct-based voting, remove third-party technology, ban the machines, tabulators, and e-poll books. And I have a quote, "True faith is keeping your eyes on God when the world around you is falling apart." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yvonne Mayer.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Yvonne Mayer, and I live in Hurford. And today, along with many other voters, I'm speaking in opposition to the actions the Board took on December 12th and January 9th. In review, on September 12th, 2023, the Board failed to approve Action Item 15, approval of 17 vote centers. The stated impact of not approving was to designate 15 polling places. Both Supervisors Judd and Crosby voted against the resolution, and this action fell within the October 1st deadline specified in ARS 16411A. End of story. Oh, but wait, there's more. On December 12th, the amended agenda attempted again to approve the vote centers. This time, an additional vote center was added in Peggy Judd's district. Surprising no one, this time Peggy Judd voted for the vote centers. The item was passed 2 to 1 with Supervisor Crosby opposed. Let me remind you, this action came after the deadline set by statute, October 1st. And again, on January 9th, the Board of Supervisors discussed spending an additional $50,000 for vote center equipment. Constituent Nancy Olmstead advised that the December 12th action approving vote centers was against Arizona statute, and additional funding for vote centers should not be approved. Did the Board question possible or probable violation of ARS statute? Did someone say, "Let's get legal advice. Let's table this until we're clear on the statute?" Only Supervisor Crosby agreed that Mrs. Olmstead was correct and voted against funding approval. Do Supervisors Judd and English not understand the law? Or do they not care? We, the people, hold the Board accountable and demand you rescind the illegal December 12th approval of vote centers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Depew.
Good morning. My name is Kim Depew. I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona, District 1. Here we are again, asking you why. Why did you reverse your own vote to use precinct voting? The September vote was by law. You unlawfully reversed your good decision in December, blatantly violating the October 1st deadline in Arizona statutes. United States Republicanism is all but lost to us. We rejoiced at the tiny scrap of self-governance you tossed us in September. Smaller precinct vote tallies put together by our trusted neighbors and friends would have smoothed out much of the vote fraud anxiety. But here we are again, asking you why, and wondering how on earth the county attorney didn't advise you against the illegal December vote center decision. Thank you for the time to speak. Please, ladies, give Mr. Crosby a chance to lead the Board.
Our next speaker is Jean Greif, or Henry S. Conroy, sorry.
My name is Henry Conroy, and I'm from Sierra Vista. Again, as is everybody else, asking the same question. We, the people, would like to know why you have frequently violated ARS 16411. It states, "The Board of Supervisors of each county honor before October 1st of each year preceding the year of the general election by an order shall establish a convenient number of election precincts in the county and define the boundaries of the precincts as follows. The election precinct boundary shall be established so that to be included within election districts prescribed by law for elected officers of the state and its political subdivisions, including community college district precincts, except those elected officers provided for in Titles 30 and 48. If after October 1 of the preceding year, the general election, the Board of Supervisors must further adjust precinct boundaries, just the boundaries, to the redistricting of election districts as prescribed by law and to comply with this subsection, the Board of Supervisors shall adjust those precinct boundaries. On October 12th, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors approved precinct voting centers, which is after the 1st of October. There are 55 precinct polling places in Cochise County, and each of them is required to have at least one voting center. The statute does not allow you to change from voting precincts to voting centers. It only allows you to establish the precinct boundaries and to designate at least one polling place for each precinct. The Board of Supervisors approved the 55 precinct polling centers on September 12th before the 1 October deadline, number 15 on your agenda. And then, the Board attempted to change to 18 voting centers, which included the additional one in Ms. Judd's area, on December 19th. This is illegal. It is totally contravention of the state law, and we, the people, want you to countermand your vote on December 19th and revert to the original and legal decision. You made a legal decision, then you broke it, and we want to know why you think that you're above the law and can break the statutes or not abide by them. As far as the voting machines, I am also a computer programmer, and it's very easy to gerrymonize those systems with different algorithms. And unless you've got somebody that's totally independent to evaluate the software that's in them, they're not trustworthy. So, I also am against the voting machines. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Giapprida. Giapprida. She's on teams. Jean?
Good morning. I'm Jean Giapprida from Hurford, Arizona, and I too just wanted to remind the Board that you, on September 12th, voted against the voting centers and in favor of the precinct polling places. Anything else that you've done after that is illegitimate, and I would like you to go back and revert to the precinct, the 55 precinct polling places to be established and defined as you were supposed to do by October 1st. If we don't have, if you don't have to follow laws, why have laws at all? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes all the call to the public. Our next item on the agenda is Consent Items 1 through 7.
Chair, I move that we approve Consent Item, the items 1 through 7.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is the next item. We can have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Series 13 Farm Winery New Liquor License Application submitted by Alexander C. King for Cactus Crew located at 10350 East Sunrise Drive, Pierce, Arizona, 85625.
I'll second the motion.
We have a presentation by Laura Lohnheim, Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is a new Series 13 in-state farm winery liquor license application submitted for Cactus Crew at 10350 East Sunrise Drive in Pierce, 85625. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid a $100 processing fee and Board staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, this is a public hearing. We have an opportunity for anyone who is hearing us today to speak up and comment on this liquor license application. Hearing no speakers, I will close the public hearing. And all for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. The next item is item number nine. I I need to, should I talk first? I just want to say this, this agenda item's important to me. It almost, almost hurts me to have to leave as Chairman. I intend full well, living as far away as I do, I do a lot of my work at home anyway. I intend full well to be at all the meetings and participating quite actively on the computers, which thanks to our wonderful team, we were able to develop the best, I think we have the best system. I've been watching a lot of meetings in other counties and I think we have the best system in Cochise County. So to do work at home. And our people call in, they call to the public and they are heard and it's just a great thing. So feel like I do that. Personal things are going on at my house that I have an extreme need to be there. I'm going to go ahead and make the nomination and I have many reasons to do this. I've, I've been weighing the options and I feel that I want to elect Ann English as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective with the February 6, 2024 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. And I, without getting personal, I can't really explain why, except for that she has had lots of experience and she has held her decorum and her, her wonderful acceptance of the many, many things that have happened in this boardroom. And I am grateful for that. And I feel that's just the easiest, most natural way for us to end this session. So session as if we're the legislature. So I did make that motion, elect Ann English as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective February 6, 2024 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would anyone like to make comments besides me? Okay. I do have people that have signed in on this. So we've had a chance for the Board to make comments. I have twelve people that signed in in support of Ann and zero that signed in opposed. And I do have people speaking on this item in support of Ann English as Chair. I don't know if the other ones are in support, but this one is in support. This is Allison Morse. You are on teams. Allison, do you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning again. My, my name is Allison Morse from Portal and I, again, thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns. Under the circumstances, it is completely understandable that Supervisor Judd would want to step down from her duties as Chair. I do want to thank you, Chairperson Judd, for your service and again let you know that you are in my thoughts during this difficult time. Supervisor English is an exemplary elected official. She has served on the Board for 23 years and many of those years she served in the role of Chair. Despite pressure from other members of the Board and some county voters, Supervisor English steadfastly upheld the law and heeded the advice of the Secretary of State and County Attorney to not engage in a 100% hand count of ballots or the refusal to certify our election results. The misguided decisions of the other two supervisors have unfortunately resulted in their indictment of felony charges. Miss English is the only supervisor who is not under felony indictment, nor does she have any open meeting law complaints filed against her. Supervisor Crosby has multiple complaints on file with the Attorney General's Office. What is most disturbing is that Mr. Crosby has not acknowledged any fault or wrongdoing. On several occasions, he has blatantly ignored counsel from the county attorney and expressed contempt for her keeping him in line. This is not the kind of leader Cochise County citizens want to run the meetings. Supervisor English brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the position of Chair. She will handle the position with grace, honor, and dignity while restoring credibility to our Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Our next speaker is Jeff Sturgis.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. I am sorry to learn of Supervisor Peggy Judd's husband's deteriorating medical condition, who now, as reported by the Herald Review, requires round-the-clock care. It must be very painful and difficult for Peggy and the whole family. I have experienced two family members in similar situations. I understand that she cannot fulfill the extra duties of the Board of Supervisors Chairperson any longer. I'm glad that Peggy has nominated Ann English to assume her role as Chairperson. And I urge Ann English to accept the nomination and I urge all three county supervisors to vote for Ann English to become what the agenda wording describes and, as I quote, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Ann English has long experience in performing the duties of a Cochise County Supervisor and has over two years' experience in fulfilling the duties of Chairperson. Ann English has the expertise, integrity, and overall competence to chair meetings and perform all other extra duties of Board person, Chairperson. One very important, obvious reason to elect Ann English as Chair of the Board of Supervisors is this. Ann is, Ann English is the only Cochise County Supervisor not being prosecuted on felony charges for engaging in election interference and criminal conspiracy. Ann follows state and federal laws, respects Cochise County Attorney's Generals, I'm sorry, Cochise County Attorney's Counsel and has no open meeting law complaints, unlike another one of our county supervisors, Tom Crosby, who has many. Cochise County citizens have witnessed Tom Crosby's outbursts and refusal to adhere to the decorum and legal requirements demanded of his position. Ann English has consistently stood up for the rule of law and our democratic processes with the dignity, integrity, and courtesy we should expect in elected leaders. To elect the other supervisor, Tom Crosby, should be unthinkable. Tom Crosby is scheduled to go soon to go on trial for felony charges, has cost taxpayers in this county vast amounts of money, brought international notoriety to our county for attempting to disenfranchise the votes of county citizens, has rudely interrupted and insulted other county officials during meetings. He has violated open meeting laws and has brought seemingly endless chaos to our county government. He should never be considered for anything but dismissal from his current position, certainly not given more leadership responsibilities. We need a stable, honest, law-abiding Chairperson with proven expertise and integrity to help guide and represent Cochise County. That person-
What's all the time? Jeff, you're, you're out of time. Thank you for understanding. The next speaker is Tricia Gerardette. She's also on teams.
Yes, good morning again, Supervisors. Tricia Gerardette in Sierra Vista. I echo similar comments we've heard. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that Supervisor Judd has surely put into her nomination. And I agree with your comments that Supervisor English has conducted herself well with all the chaos we've had recently. And I will urge Supervisor Crosby to vote in favor of having Supervisor English be Chairman of the Board. I hope you will do that. I have a question for all the Supervisors. I don't know if you can or will answer. Later on this year, when our Elections Director will present the Board with results of various elections and the Director certifies that those results are accurate, will you pledge now to accept and certify those results if the Director certifies they are accurate? Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. The next speaker is Sandy Trolle. She's here.
Sandy Trolle from Sierra Vista. I didn't really prepare a lot to say because I didn't even know to put oppose or support because it was not a person's name in that blank. And I'm surprised that it's Ann English. My quote was going to say, "I am in support of Tom Crosby to be elected as Chairman of the Board." And I just thought you guys rotated around and it's, Ann English has been Chairman previously. I'm just totally floored at the fact that Peggy, you would say you're conservative constitutionalist and you wouldn't support someone who supports the Constitution. Nobody in Cochise County wants open borders. Nobody wants voter interference. I mean, nobody wants, everyone wants school choice. Everyone here wants the, oh, okay. Anyway, I'm just rambling now. So anyway, I'm just very disappointed. Thank you.
Yeah. Our next speaker is Joseph Patterson.
Good morning. Joseph Patterson, Sierra Vista, Arizona. And I'm not being paid to be here like some people are. I would like to thank Peggy for initiating the the effort to restore election integrity. Originally, this whole thing started because all the people, all we, the people, asked for was, let us go ahead and run your election. Just let us audit, hand-count audit the results to make sure everything is okay. That's all we asked for. That's all we asked for. Just let us hand-count, make sure everything's okay. That's all we wanted. And look at what has happened. I want to applaud you. I want to thank you for making the effort. No one else would, but you did make the effort initially to restore election integrity so that we can trust our votes. That's all we asked for. We just wanted to trust our votes. Since that time, since I've become involved, and that's the only reason I really did get involved in all of this, was because of the election. During this time, I found that Supervisor Crosby has been very open and receptive and, in my opinion, is, is a fine man of integrity. He really does love the Constitution. He puts the Constitution above everything because if we lose it, we've lost our freedom and we're losing it now. But I think Tom, Mr. Crosby, is the right person for this time with all the headwinds that are opposing our efforts just to, just to make sure the results are accurate. That's all we want. I think, I honestly believe he is the man for the time. He has the courage. He has the wisdom. He has the brains, the fortitude to do what needs to be done. And then if if the Board follows his lead, I think we are in for strong headwinds, but I think we're in for integrity with our elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tamara Arburch.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Supervisors and all those attendants for allowing me to speak today. My name is Tamara Birch. I live in Bisbee, Arizona, and I've been a proud voter for 43 years. Never missed an election. Thank you to have this Action Item Number Nine on the agenda today. I strongly support your vote to accept Ann English as our next Chairperson of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. She has shown her leadership and has carried out her responsibilities of this elected position with honor, honesty, and objectivity as Chairperson and Board Member previously and currently. She is experienced, informed, and a vital member of this organization. I trust her diligence to apply her accumulated skills and to follow state laws, statutes, and procedures to maintain civility and justice and economic stability in our county. As a former teacher, I know she has done her homework and is diligent in all of her preparations for all agenda items. Her years of being a qualified public servant and elected official have been a benefit to all of her and our constituents. She has always been professional and timely in responding to my questions and concerns. I appreciate that quality deeply. I can understand and relate to Supervisor Judd's need to caretake of her husband as her priority. I've gone through that and I know Ann is also going through something not as serious, but important. May we find, may Ms. Judd find solace to deal with her challenges in a loving, constant way. It's a hard job. I respectfully request your approval of Ann English as the returning Chairperson of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. And concerning Ann, she's gone through many election processes and cycles and I have also been a poor worker and a poll observer. And the machines, the only thing that's connected to the, to the internet is the poll book and that has nothing to do with her ballots. I believe in our integrity. I believe in our constitutional system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joy Banks. She's on teams.
Yes, good morning. Can you, can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes.
Oh, yes. Ms. Judd, I'm so sorry that you're going through this, this trial at this time of your life. And I too have had family members on hospice care and, and it's a long and grueling process that, that can take many years to overcome if, if your spouse should pass soon. So my condolences to you on this. And I'm very grateful that you can continue on as, as a supervisor at this time, considering that we have five elections coming up this year, important elections, as they all are. I do support your recommendation, Ms. Judd, for Ann English as Chair. And I'm very glad that you recognize her service to the county and to us as people in the county and voting members of the county. And I do approve Ann as being Chair as she is not under indictment or interfering with any elections that I know of. And that I'm, I'm very pleased that she's going to make sure that all election proceedings make it to the appropriate agendas for the appropriate actions, as the Chair's position does set the agenda. And if necessary, she will once again stand firm against attempts by her fellow supervisors to delay or subvert the certification of our votes. And that, that was exceedingly painful, Ms. Judd, Mr. Crosby, when that occurred in- When that occurred in November of 2022, I was absolutely shocked that you would not certify the 40,000 votes of our county and put, put the entire state's certified results into jeopardy. And for that, I, I do, it hurts so deeply that I, I just cannot get over that. And those that prefer hand counting, I wish you would look at the statistics on how inaccurate 100% hand counts are, especially with so many things on the ballot these days. All right, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our, people who have asked to speak on this, on this agenda item. I, if there's no other discussion?
I have one comment.
Okay.
That is, I will be opposing this appointment because of the severe mistakes made by Madam English and yourself, Madam Chair.
I will accept that comment. So at this point, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. And I will vote aye for the pure fact that we, we need to maintain decorum in this chamber, and we will, and I think this is the best choice for that. So I vote aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have two in favor, and the motion carries. The next item is number 10. We'll need a motion for that item.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 2402, authorizing Cochise County to apply for a grant from the Arizona Department of Housing State Housing Trust Fund to fund emergency housing repairs for income-qualified Cochise County residents, excluding residents in the incorporated areas of Sierra Vista and Douglas.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Susan Bronson is our planner in the county, and she's going to explain this to us.
Yes, good morning, everyone. You are here, excuse me, we are here today to ask your authority for the Development Services-
Get a little closer to-
Okay, excuse me. We're here to ask your authority to apply for this grant. We're required to ask your authority in advance by the Arizona Department of Housing. This is a different grant from our CDBG grant that also does housing repair. It's a little more streamlined process, and it would supplement our funding through the CDBG grant. This is also administered by Arizona Department of Housing. It is a state grant. It is for emergency home repair only. If it were not an emergency, we would not be able to use funds under this grant, but we would be able to use funds under the CDBG grant. The grant is competitive. It's a $250,000 grant. We're proposing to apply for $200,000 under this grant. And there are a number of scoring criteria that the state is using to, to assess these grants. We feel that we're, we have strong criteria that we can meet. It also favors rural projects, of course, we're a rural county. So although it is competitive, we feel that we can submit a competitive, excuse me, competitive application, and we're here to ask your authority to do so.
So any other questions or concerns from the Board?
No, I'm always glad when we do something that's a little more streamlined, because in the past, there've been so many criteria that caused people who really needed to have home repairs not to be able to get them. And I noticed that they don't have any here about the, so many things that have been in the past. So I'm hoping that we get this grant in order to be able to move things a little faster for these people.
Thank you. Yes, there's no NEPA required, and it's a streamlined bidding process.
Thank you for your efforts in organizing this and preparing it for us. Okay, hearing no other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And stay there because you are presenter for the next item. Okay, next item, item 11.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 24-03, authorizing the adoption of State Housing Trust Fund Owner Occupied Emergency Repaired Housing Guidelines.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? If you could give us the presentation on that portion.
Yes, thank you. As part of this grant application, we are required to include State Housing Trust Fund Housing Guidelines, and these are the guidelines that we are requesting your approval of. They just reflect the changes, the differences between the CDBG grant. You previously did adopt housing guidelines for the CDBG grant. These are very similar, but we tailored them to the State Housing Trust Fund grant. A couple differences are that this grant can be used in the floodplain, however, floodplain insurance is required by the homeowner. In addition, it must be an emergency repair versus our CDBG grant, which does not have to be an emergency repaired. So we had to slightly adjust the guidelines, but by and large, they're very, very similar to the guidelines you previously adopted.
But they still have to be owner, you have to own it and occupy the residence.
Yes, that is correct. With this grant, however, it doesn't have a 12-month requirement that the homeowner lived in the house 12 months preceding the application.
Well, is that all? Does anyone else have?
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Bronson.
Thank you. And I'm hearing no more comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Our next presentation, or our next motion, item number 12, if we could have a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the State of Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, AVMAC, which enables participants to share resources during emergencies effective through December 31st, 2033.
All right, we have a motion second.
Second.
Okay. Daniel Deschawn, he's our Emergency Management Director, and he will present this item.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Chairwoman, members of the Board. This agreement is the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact from the State of Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. The goal of the compact or the agreement is to identify parties and resources to be used during an emergency, and also identify the mechanisms for reimbursement beforehand. It also lays out the ground rules for when we share or request resources, such as we'll follow the National Incident Management System, such as, which you might hear, the Incident Command System. It also establishes interoperability rules and resource typing. So if you, an organization asks for something, they get what they need specifically. And it also does have caveats where there is no obligation. So if an organization, a city or a county, doesn't have the resources to send, they're not held liable for not sending something.
Well, are there any questions?
No, just a comment. I know when we had the, the big fire around Sierra Vista, we learned a lot that we should have put in place ahead of time. It was kind of learn as you go on that. And the Mutual Aid Compact now, I, I think probably yearly, you know, the, the Public Works has contacted about what they could contribute, you know, whether we're going to need graders or et cetera. So I think it's a good planning tool. So that's all I'm going to say is that I'm glad the state has a contract so that we can put it together so that all the guidelines are there.
Yeah, and I think it's specifically important that we aren't demanded that we give the money if we cannot. So many things are put upon us at the state level, and, and it's good that they recognize that some people, you know, have the resources and some do not, maybe because we've had all our own emergencies and used them up. So I appreciate that. Well, thank you. If there's any further comments?
No further.
Okay. So I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Deschawn.
Thank you.
And so our next is under the item of facilities. Could you have the next motion, please? 13.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Contract 23-01-FAC-01 with KWR construction for the construction of facilities, maintenance building in the amount of $2,753,551.55 to approved proposal with K E and G for utility trenching in the amount of $123,598 at parcel 102-30-114W1, or excuse me, 1228 Hurford Road, Bisbee, Arizona 85603, effective January 23rd, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, that was a lot. So you have your job cut out for us, giving this presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a, to build a new facilities shop, basically. It's part of the county's long-term plan to shrink our footprint. Part of what we're doing now is we, we use the old mechanic shop that's on Hurford Road. We gave up our shop that we had here on, on Melody Lane Campus to the library when the library came out of the old high school. And this is just the continuation of that process and trying to get that building started and get it built.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just, maybe it was obvious to others and not to me, but when I looked at this, I haven't seen in the past where we've had to do a different proposal for another part of the project. Is this part of that $2,753,000 that goes to K E and G?
No, no, that, that, that $123,000, that's a separate deal. That's part of the, the utilities. Part of this was under a different director in facilities when we originally started this, and we were looking at doing some of the utility work prior to doing the building, which we did not. So it was under a contract originally with K and G, and so we're just picking it up again and going forward.
So it was good to clarify that. So we're voting for, to approve $2 billion, 2.7 million plus the $123,000.
That is correct.
Okay, so total those together. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. The next is item number 14. Thank you, Daryl. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve change order to Contract 2401, SWD01, previously approved by the Board on July the 25th, 2023, to increase the contract amount from $3,181,659.61 to $3,305,120.44 for additional work on excavation and liner material.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Welcome to our, your new position, and, and this is Jason Fazio. He's our, I forgot what you are now.
New Public Works.
New Public Works Director. Easy. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Basically, I'm here to respectfully request the Board of Supervisors approve a change order to the contract to complete Cell 5 at the Western Regional Landfill. This would increase the original PO an additional $123,460 for the additional excavation and liner material that was needed to finish it.
So why did we need to do more excavation?
We actually, when we were digging Cell 5, there was a wet area that was left there from the previous year's monsoon, and we had to remove that wet material to put in dry material so it wouldn't sink and tear the liner.
I, I think you'd mentioned that to us before, and I was just bringing that up so the public would know why, why there was a change in this.
Sure.
We do get so used to things, just cost of things going up, so I think it is important that there was something additional that had to be done to Cell 5. So thank you for coming in and requesting this and for handling that proper, proper disposal of our, our many, 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 millions of waste, millions of units of waste. So thank you.
The throwaway society.
Yeah, unfortunately. So anyway, is there any other comments?
No further comments.
Okay, and I call for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fazio. So the next item on the agenda is number 15, which we're back in legislative session, is back. They're cranking away up there at the Legislature, and so we do have a few items that have been discussed at the County Supervisors Association. There are some things on the table, but I think we all get emails and we're aware. I'm wondering if Miss English, who's our Legislative Policy Committee member, would like to say anything?
The only thing I want to say is that when you get the information the same way that I get it, even though I, every Friday morning, am on the meeting, you need to let me know ahead of time if there's issues that need to be brought up. And that's always been the case, is that while I may be the mouthpiece, I'm not the decision maker.
And, and that needs to be during this item, during a meeting. There's no other time we can really bring up our grievances to you, Miss English. So I just needed to clarify that. So this, I guess it was inappropriate that I called on you because I should be calling on us. All right, so we'll be prepared from now on for that discussion. If there is anything to discuss, do you have any issues with what's the policy going on it?
Well, I just talked to-
Yep, very good. And that is also a very important activity for us. All right, is there anything else on that item? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to the report by Richard G. Karwatska, our County Administrator, and he's going to talk about recent impending county matters.
Thank you so much. And so the most important thing that is in need right now is poll workers. So we still need poll workers to work the polls on Election Day, especially in the rural areas and San Simone and McNeil. So if people are listening, if you have friends, please let them know. You can go visit www.cochise AZ.gov backslash elections, click on the link for poll worker information to get more information and submit an application. The stipends are up to $155 per election worked, and the typical hours are from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we're still looking for poll workers. Please pass on that information, and please submit an application. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our regular reports from Summary of Current Events is what the title is, District 1, Supervisor Tom Crosby.
Thank you.
Okay, District 2.
Okay.
And I am just going to take another minute to say thank you for all the, this is especially for the public that's reached out, but thank you for understanding. It's, it was a transition a year ago. I thought I had it bad, and, but I chose to step up and do more, and my daughters were helping, and now we're to the point where that isn't working as well, and I need to be home. Things, things do get better sometimes, and we're still hoping for that. So I'd like to say thank you, and I appreciate everyone's comments today and, and their opinions. This is the, this is an honor to be the Chairman, and I recognize that, that I maybe fell short sometimes, but I did my best, and I want to say thank you. And with that, our next meeting is February 6th, where it'll be a regular Board meeting at 10:00 a.m. This meeting is adjourned.